I must have a different packet. All right, I'm all set. Oh, there was a...
I second Bill.
There was, there was a comment in the EMS presentation by Chris Coats, where Cheryl Trombley made a comment regarding the amount of the total mill rate for the county, and you had it as nineteen dollars and change. But I didn't get a chance to call Kevin, but the county's portion is around two dollars.
Two twenty-seven.
Two twenty-seven. You see that, Sue? Yeah. Two twenty-seven.
I hope I'm right. I bet you I'm correct.
We okay with that?
I'm okay with it, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the non-public meetings first September sixteenth.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Did you see Julius's name in there? How cool is that? Julius coming back.
I know, he's getting married.
Is that what it is? Good for him. Good for them. All in favor?
Aye.
Public input. Anybody have anything to add to the meeting? It's not on the agenda. John?
I guess I was here in the beginning of July and had some questions.
Just, I forgot to make a comment. Just for Sue, she knows who you are, but for anyone else who wishes to speak, if you could let Sue know your name.
John Praynor, P-R-A-Y-N-O-R. And I live here in West Swansea. Did I say beautiful town? Downtown West Swansea. I was here in July and had some questions in regards to the Christian Hill Bridge, in particular why the town had to put the bridge up for sale and then decide to move it down to the rail trail. And at that time, there were no answers to these questions. It seems that Michael Grand knew all the answers, he's not here anymore. And Lori's been very helpful, but she hadn't gotten caught up yet at that point. So I did some investigating to try to help out and discovered, just from my knowledge, and I discovered some things. The vote took place to accept funds from the state in 2020. It's Article eight in the vote of 2020. In that article, it, the vote is to take money from the state for the new bridge. But at the time, it wasn't known that the bridge had any historic value. Last year, it was discovered that in order to take some federal money, because we needed another twenty percent, otherwise the town would have to pay that extra twenty percent. In order to get the federal money, the bridge couldn't be torn down because it is eligible to be a national historic landmark in two ways. One on its own, and one as part of the village of West Swansea. So even though the town voted to take the funds to build the new bridge, they didn't really vote to tear down a potential historic landmark. So last year, November, this was realized for October. And then in November, the town put the bridge up for sale for a dollar as what, as was required by, in order to get the federal money. And no one bought the bridge for a dollar. So then it was required to find another use for the bridge of historical value. And it was determined that the bridge would be moved down to the rail trail and used to build a replacement for one of the washouts. So I was trying to figure all this out, and it was kind of hard to find the answers. But really, the town never voted to tear down a potential historic landmark. So that is left up to the three of you to decide on your own whether to tear it down or try to fix it. And that's not really something that I'd want in my conscience to be in charge of tearing down historic landmarks. And I want the town to vote on it. So basically, what I'm suggesting is that the town take another look and possibly have a vote to tear down the historic landmark.
Bless you.
Thank you.
I know you had some correspondence.
Yeah, it was kind of on a different subject.
Okay. So we can, we can, we can reach out to our attorney, the town's attorney, and present your, your comment and take guidance accordingly. What would your suggestion be? You, if I understand correctly, you're asking that the removal of the bridge be put on for town vote in March, put on the warrant for town vote in March. Is that...
Either that or you three decide to tear it down.
Will we tear it down or will we move it?
Well, it, 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 once it's moved, it's not eligible as a historic landmark anymore. It's no longer the Christian Hill Bridge. It's some pieces of wood that are moved down the road. But in the eyes of the federal government, it's no longer a historic bridge. You're moving it, it's no longer the Christian Hill Bridge. It's some timbers that are moved down the road. So it's no longer eligible for historic, uh, historic landmark.
There was a lot of research done on it, and a lot of public meetings did happen when Michael was here. But I think, you know, I know we are, of course, following all the state and federal regulations. And I know there was a lot of emails and information on the historical aspect of it. I just haven't had time to go through and, and research that, what the change was. And maybe we could ask Joseph from Lillan Tanner to come in and maybe give us just an update. There seems to be like a lot of what happened. And he might be able to come in and just give a brief background of, you know, how we arrived at where we are now.
One of the discussions that I had with Lori was that my wife and I were having the impression, up until yesterday, that part of our land would be taken for the new bridge because it's going from a one-lane bridge to a two-lane bridge in a side. And they were going to take part of our land. And this is what I thought up until yesterday. I emailed Joseph to find out if that was still true. And he said that, no, they were going to stay within the regular bounds and they wouldn't be using our property. So that's great, that's great news. I'm happy about that. What I would like the board to look at is the fact that it is now, in our novels, that it's historic landmark. It has the potential to be an historic landmark. And also part of a historic place, as West Swansea, downtown West Swansea, is a historic place. And it can go on the national deeds in two ways. Once it's moved, it's no longer in that potential. So if you decide to tear it down, you are tearing down a potential historic landmark. I just wanted to let you know.
I think to be clear, the board has already made that determination. So what you're, you're suggesting, if I understand correctly, is that since that decision was made either in nineteen or twenty to put it on the warrant, that would have been a board decision to do that, so the board made that.
At that time, there was no discussion, there was nothing on the article about anything about it being historic landmark. The only thing that was voted on was to take the funds from the state to build a concrete bridge.
But the understanding was that the bridge would be replaced. So what, if I understand you correctly, then you're, you're indicating that subsequent to that decision, there's been additional information that's come forward that indicates that that's an historic, or that bridge has historic implications.
Right.
So it, it changes the complexity of what was originally decided. I think as Lori said, we can, we can let you know when Joseph will be scheduled to come in, and we can have a discussion about that.
That would be great.
Yeah, we would. I think, just, you know, just from the standpoint of your comment with regard to not losing land, I knew about that months ago. So somehow there's...
I was never, we were never told.
Some line of communication that hasn't been maintained.
And I know that Lori's, you know, just been hired recently, and Michael Grand, he was anti-nazism involved. So I understand that, I just didn't know.
Sure, we can, we can do that. We'll, we'll make you aware of what Joseph said. Available to come in, it would either be later this month or hopefully early November. Thank you, John.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Appreciate it, John. Anybody else? What? You don't like the sun?
I do, but...
Not quite like that. If you just shift a little bit.
Oh.
Might be the other one.
Okay, we're good. Thanks.
All right, the first item on our agenda is Margaret Blank from Underwood Engineers. Margaret, how are you? Come on up. We're well, thank you.
And this is my colleague, Desmond Kager.
Desmond?
Desmond Kager.
Nice, nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming. It's nice to meet you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Margaret. Are there any that the public could look at?
I do have a few extra.
Okay. That'd be great.
I have a few extra that I was interested in.
This is on what? This is...
I was gonna say, I kept one for us, right?
Yeah.
All right, my name is Margaret Blank, and I'm with Underwood Engineers. This is Desmond Kager. He worked on this stormwater asset management program with me along the way. We've already done one of these presentations for the wastewater asset management program, so you're probably familiar with some of this already.
When was that?
When was that?
Yeah, that you came and did a presentation for that.
I want to say it was a year and a half ago, maybe?
Long time.
It was a while, yeah. So this project was funded by a thirty thousand dollar asset management grant from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars was for our engineering contract, and there was sixteen hundred dollars for owner purchase software and equipment. The Southwest Regional Planning Commission actually completed the field work for this project, which was also funded by a separate grant. And I want to say they were out there for twenty-plus days. They collected a lot of information, which was really great. And we did the asset management portion of it using the information that the Southwest Regional Planning Commission collected. So the goals of asset management are to understand the condition of your stormwater infrastructure, identify and correct current deficiencies, anticipate future needs, and provide a basis to estimate financial resources required to maintain, rehabilitate, and replace assets as necessary. And of course, to continue to build on the asset management program in the future. The components of the asset management program are the vision statement, level of service goals, the asset inventory and condition assessment, criticality, which is a way to prioritize your assets, financial overview, an implementation plan, and a communication plan. So next, Desmond will talk about the vision statement and level of service goals.
So the town developed the following vision statement for its stormwater and wastewater systems. Balance environmental preservation with growth, protect and proactively renew assets. Level, the definition of level service is a set of smarter goals used to balance the service provided with cost. And smarter goals, it's acronym, it stands for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time-based, evaluate and redo. So some of the goals for next year is updating the town website, encouraging attendance at public meetings, clearing sediment and debris from culverts, catch basins, and manholes, review town and state development requirements and proposed revisions, complete stormwater planning study, and evaluate stormwater operation and maintenance costs.
Is this, are these items delineated in more detail?
Yeah, in the report. Some of the ongoing stormwater projects include North Winchester Street and California Street reconstruction. This area was one of the trouble spots identified by town staff. And this one point three million dollar project will be completed this month, October twenty twenty-five.
Scheduled to be completed this month.
They're doing a good job.
Yeah. Talbot Hill Road also required paving due to flood damage, and this was also a trouble spot identified by the staff.
And you're talking about the public portion of Talbot Hill Road?
I believe so.
Where the paving was, was carved out?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Because on the other end of Talbot Hill, on the other end of Talbot Hill Road, where it comes up against East Shore Road, we had quite a bit of erosion and remediation that we had to do as well. But that part's classic.
Okay. All right. The next section of it is the stormwater system inventory and condition assessment. Getting old, I need glasses. Southwest Regional Planning Council evaluated one thousand five hundred and eighty-three of the town's one thousand six hundred and eighty-five stormwater assets and assigned a condition score. There were about a hundred and two that they couldn't find or were paved over, couldn't access for whatever reason.
Are those, are those listed somewhere so that we could?
Yes.
If they're important, we could, okay.
Yes, yes. In fact, I did forward the draft report to the planning department. And all this information is on the town's RGIS online account as well.
We found some over here, didn't we, on the, on the project we're working on now, didn't we?
I bet.
There was three of them we found.
This is gonna be an ongoing...
That were paved over.
Yeah, yeah, this is gonna be an ongoing project, for sure. And Swansea is not unique. Like, there's so many towns that are figuring out what they have out there and what kind of condition it's in. So the condition score is based on both the structural integrity of the asset as well as if there's a maintenance issue. So a stormwater asset might be given a poor condition score because it has a severe structural defect, such as, say, a pipe inlet that's crushed or deformed. It might also be given a poor condition score because it's clogged with leaves and debris and can't perform its intended function because of that. Town staff also identified eight trouble spots in town where the town has experienced serious flooding incidents or stormwater-related damage. On the next page, I have a picture, you know, just as an example of a structural defect. On the left, there's a, a pipe outlet with half the head wall broken off and, and the head walls covered with moss. The one next to it is a photo of a clogged inlet. The slide underneath that is a map of the stormwater trouble spots. It's very tiny.
Where are the ones that are pictured? Where are those?
There's, there's a, this map is in the report. And I can just run down the list that staff gave us. It was Talbot Hill, California Brook, Winch Hill, Pebble Hill, Atkinson Hill, Dunn Hill, Cobble Hill, and Swansea Lake. And these are typically areas, they're kind of flat areas, where you have higher elevations draining into them. Makes sense, it's draining into a bowl. Just a quick overview of the asset types. We have, you have manholes and catch basins. They might be masonry or precast structures with a sump, meaning they're able to collect sediment and debris. Manhole would have a solid round cover. A catch basin will typically have a grate. A drop inlet is a masonry or precast structure without a sump. Stormwater pipe might be connected to a structure, a ditch, or an outfall. Inlets and outlets may or may not have an end treatment. You might have a head wall or a flared end section. That photo I had on the prior page, that photo on the right, that's a flared end section. And a lot of stormwater pipes have neither. Stormwater asset quantities. You've got one thousand fifty-nine structures. These include stormwater inlets and outlets, which might just be the end of the pipe. And they keep track of it that way for maintenance purposes. So if there's something wrong with an inlet or an outlet, they can keep track of that. And also stormwater pipe, thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-four linear feet. It adds up. You guys actually have a lot. When the Southwest Regional Planning Commission was out there, like I said earlier, they assigned a condition score to each of these assets. And they gave a condition score of three, which means poor condition, to a hundred and fifty of those. They didn't necessarily classify why that score was given. So I did a keyword search to find out. And it's, it's a good thing to know why, because if it's, if it's a maintenance issue, you can just say, clean out the debris, and the asset is fine again. If it's a structural issue, then you might need a repair or a replacement. But thirty-six were because they were blocked or clogged. Twenty-one were damaged or broken. One was inaccessible. Ten were in more than one category. Sixty-eight, they didn't put any reason why they gave it that bad condition score, but they do have pictures of everything. And in fourteen cases, there was, there was a comment, but none of the keywords were found. So that brings you up to your hundred and fifty.
Can, can you specify the difference between fair and poor?
Well, fair is something that is still serviceable. You know, like, maybe there's some corrosion on a metal pipe, but water can still flow through it. Poor is something where the asset is non-functional or non-serviceable for some reason. Could be that it's clogged with leaves and debris or vegetation. Or it could be because, say, it's a pipe that's deformed or collapsed and water isn't flowing through it like it should.
So is it fair to assume that there's a wide divergence between fair and poor? Because poor seems pretty, pretty absolute. It's not operating.
Correct.
Whereas some corrosion on a pipe really is, just doesn't look too good. But it's still operating.
Right, it's still working, but it's...
Is it, is it important that we focus on the ones that are fair to bring them into a higher, higher grade? Obviously, the poor have to be looked at.
Well, I'm thinking, since you have that planning, the stormwater planning project coming up, I'm wondering if, you know, you might find, once that work is done, that some of these assets might need to be replaced because of their capacity. You know, even if they're in good condition, they might not have the capacity to transmit the amount of stormwater that you need. So I would say, I would say probably the number one priority would be to find the ones that are clogged, have maintenance issues, and clean those out and see if that improves things. Step one.
Sure.
You know?
Thank you.
All right, next section is about...
As a percentage, as a percentage, slightly less than ten percent of, of the known assets are poor? How does that rate in terms of overall other communities? Is that fairly standard? Are we high, are we low?
I would say, so in most cases, we don't have the information that Southwest Regional Planning Commission picked up. So a lot of times, we're just out there mapping the system and not having the time to collect the information. But because the Southwest Regional Planning Council, Commission, sorry, had that grant and had the time, they were able to go out and pick all that up for you. Typically, we'll just kind of focus on sort of like the main downtown area, because that's typically where people want to make sure everything's functioning correctly. So it's hard to say what the percentage condition-wise would be. You guys are ahead of the game already because you have the Southwest Regional Planning Commission and their grant, where they were able to collect all this information. So prioritization of assets, which is something we were talking a little bit about just now. So we assign a probability of failure score, which is, has to do with the condition of the asset, the age and material, if we have that information, or the capacity. The impact of failure is, you know, what is the consequence if this asset isn't functioning? So of course, public health and safety is a big concern. Water quality, damage to the roadway. How many people are affected by a failure? You know, if it's a big culvert going across the main drag and that fails, that's a big problem. But if it's on a dead-end road somewhere, not as much. Still a big problem, but it won't affect as many people.
Sure.
So with the stormwater systems, we use the DOT's rating system. So that's a system between zero to three. Zero means there was no score assigned. And of course, there's, oh, I left out one and two. One is good, two is fair, three is poor, and zero is not assigned. Probability of failure is also set on that zero-to-three scale. In a lot of cases, we might know the installation year and the material of the asset. the installation year and the material of the asset, so we can figure out, okay, what's the remaining useful life? And we will assign probability based on that. But it's better to go with condition if you have it. In this case, we had condition, but we didn't necessarily have the year of installation. So it just worked out in this case that the probability of score, the probability of failure is equal to the condition score, in this case. Impact of failure, one to three, from lowest to highest. And I think we assigned an impact of failure to score, impact of failure score to everything, to all the stormwater assets. The risk score is probability of failure times impact, and that's used to rank your assets. So on the slide below that, I, I made a little map of an example of the impact of failure score. And this is one of your trouble spots. I believe this is California Brook. So in the flat area, everything has a high impact of failure score. So they're shown in red, and then as you go out, it's green and then blue. Because it seems to be in the lower elevation, you know, the flatter, lower elevation areas is where the flooding incidents happen. We...
Are you on page 11?
I am, yes, I was on page 11.
Where, where is the blue?
The blue is off to the left. It's a little hard to read, I know.
Okay. This is... Now here. This would be Winchester Street. Right here. That'd be Winchester Street, Route 10. So that's California.
That's California.
No, this would be Winchester. That would be California.
You mean Route 10?
Yeah, Route 10 is here. And North Winchester, South Winchester is there. So that would be California.
So you're saying it's on this side of Route 10?
It's on that side of Route 10.
Yeah, going into V Point.
No. Sorry about this, we're just trying to...
I just have to understand this, because it's...
We're both Flatlanders, so if you take a little...
So where is California Brook, between these reds?
This, this would be South Winchester Street. That would be Route 10. And that must be California. That really doing work.
West Street is what we're doing work on.
No, that's over here. That would be down here. Anyway, go ahead.
Go ahead, we'll keep going.
We'll figure it out.
There's our bigger maps in the report.
Yeah, this is difficult, because it's so small.
Yeah, I know. I, I went back and forth about whether I should put it in.
I should have took my 350s instead of my 250s.
She had the flash drive, but you probably don't have the...
Oh. I wish I had interrupted you.
That's okay, that's all right. On the next page, we mapped out, this is going to be another hard-to-see one, but we mapped out all of those 1,600 assets or so on, on a chart, which plots impact of failure versus probability of failure, so that you can kind of categorize them. So up in the red, up in the right-hand corner, those are the highest risk. Priority renewal is the yellow, up in the left-hand corner. And then the green is frequent monitoring. These are assets that are in decent condition, but they have a high impact. So they're, you want to keep an eye on them, even though they might not need immediate attention. And limited monitoring are in blue. And then, of course, more information is needed, meaning, these are, these are assets which weren't assigned a probability of failure score or a condition score, so they're down there in the bottom in the gray.
Are, are the locations identified somewhere?
Yes, we actually have a map by criticality.
Thank you.
Yeah. Prioritization, oh, so this table is basically by asset type, and it has quantities of each asset type in those different categories. And that tables in the report as well.
What, what are the headers? I can't read the headers on the blue background.
The first one is the asset type. The next one is highest risk, which is that red area. The one next to that is priority renewal, which is the yellow. Frequent monitoring, which is the green. And limited monitoring, which is blue. And more information needed is that gray area, those assets which weren't assigned a, a score. And then the total to the right. All right, financial overview. We don't have too much to say here. I think there's going to be more about this, probably, once the planning project is completed. But we did offer this table, which is broken down by asset type. There are quantities for each asset type, plus the unit cost. And it gives you a total cost of $31,400,000 approximately.
That's all?
That's, that's it. That's the price tag for all your stormwater assets, estimated.
In one year?
Hey, nothing.
Wow, in one year?
One year, you have to pull them all out of the ground in one year. That's, that's everything together right now.
That's why the DPW director isn't here tonight.
I think he moved.
And I provided a, a pie chart of all that. And, you know, really, the big takeaway from that is that the big, high dollar is with the stormwater pipe. That's true of everybody. The stormwater pipe is usually the big number there, the hardest to replace and the most expensive. And that's true of the wastewater system, too. All right, the implementation and communication plan. So this is basically just a summary of the deliverables. We created the inventory files and uploaded those to Swansea's ArcGIS online account. ArcGIS is a mapping software. So that is there for staff to use and look at. We created a story map. This, a story map is an app on ArcGIS. And you can think of it like a glorified PowerPoint presentation. It's got an interactive map in it. It's got some dashboards summarizing some of what I talked about in the presentation. We also set up an ArcGIS Pro project on Swansea's ArcGIS workstation. So with your ArcGIS license, you have the software on the workstation, you have your online account where your files are stored. And you have some electronic forms that staff can use.
And that's different than the public-facing part of it?
You, so the story map, yeah, well, they're all linked together. The, you can use it to create the public-facing information. And typically, people will do that with the story map.
Okay, thank you.
The financial, oh, wait a minute. Oh, Python tools saved to Swansea's workstation. That's to help staff with automating some of the tasks related to this. A financial planning spreadsheet, which is where a lot of these tables and graphs came from, and that's in the report. And the level of service matrix in Excel format, that's where you're, that's where we recorded the goals that were developed at the level of service workshop. So next steps are to finalize the AMP report. The grant deadline is today, so we made it. And then, after today, we can submit the final disbursement request. And you get all your money back.
Is that a good thing?
I think so.
So where do we go from here?
Well, I guess, I'm betting, Joe's not here tonight, but I think if he was, he would tell us that they've already started cleaning out some of the, you know, clogged catch basins and stormwater pipes.
When were these done? When were these, like, a year ago? Where, where are we at?
This information was collected in 2023.
Yeah, because as I go through this, I get involved with Joe quite a bit, and I can check off quite a bit of these that are done.
Yeah, I, I...
I witnessed them all, and I, and I know. But one of the major questions I have is, do, do we have access at these pitches? And where these problems are? Like, when you look at the 150 here, that you have on page nine, we can look at these 150 that are in the poor area, and we can see the picture and where they are? We have access at that?
You can't, this is going to get a little technical. So those pictures are saved on Stefan's workstation. So we can figure out a way to help him share those with you. We tried to save them to your ArcGIS online account. But there were so many pictures, it, it was just too much.
But all the pictures labeled, obviously, right?
Yeah, they, they're there. Yes, you have those.
Well, I think that's going to be one big important part, to see where we are today, because we're looking at a year and a half. And, I mean, I know, we killed a lot of these. We fixed a lot. Even on California, it was the wrong-sized pipe, and the water was too much, and went, and went over the pipe. And so we put a bigger pipe in, and...
Perfect, yeah, so a lot of this has already been taken care of.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So, that's great.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret. Thank you, Desmond. Appreciate you coming to Swansea.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Fire Chief Eric Mattson, welcome, with your team.
Sure. Eric Mattson, Deputy Michael Burke, and Assistant Chief Mick Sanchez. So it's just a, just, we haven't come in for a while, so I thought we should come in and give you a, a kind of a overview of what's been going on, how things have been going. And go from there.
We're all ears.
Yeah, so as you can see, we've had some pretty busy months. Not only call-wise, but just in general, day-to-day operations.
Can I ask a question, so I understand the sort of... On your calls here, does that mean we went on these calls, every one of these? We were there on all these calls? Or do we get, or did, is it you guys that went out there on all these calls this month of June?
Those were calls for our, for our department, yep.
Quite a bit.
Yep, yeah. Yep, so, so there's those there. You know, along with the, the events that we've had. Thankfully, we had, had all the events covered. Had some pretty large events throughout the summer here.
If you could go through them, because there are people here in the public, just so they, they don't have access to them.
Sure.
Could you start with your totals?
Sure, so our totals for, I just did June, July, and August. June, we had 106 calls for service. So 21 of those were fire calls. 85 were EMS calls. July had 90 of that, 90 calls. 17 were fire, and 73 were EMS. And August, we had 121. 32 calls were for fire issues, and 89 of them were for EMS. So a very busy month. And I think we're still pretty well on track for about 1,100 calls for the year. So...
I think what Jimmy was talking about, though, as far as like, I know these are all calls that Swansea could dispatch. Do Swansea personnel go to all of those calls?
No, no.
I think that's...
But we paid for it.
Oh, no, I understand that.
Yeah. Nope, we didn't get to all of them, right, so... So with that, you've got the, the, we, we, uh, Mike set up a couple of days in June for some trainings. We had really good tours of the new Mount Caesar School. We invited a few other towns in that, you know, were going to ever come in, help out with our, you know, any kind of mutual aid for us. We invited the ambulance service to come in, because they have to go through there as well at some point. We did, I did the operations and safety plans for the Northlands Music Fest. And that was just a, that's, that's, so in case they have, it's kind of a little bit of everything, you know? Could be, could be just a storm issue, could be, much like you see in the news, any kind of, you know, disaster of that sort, too. You know, when you have somebody in there doing, trying to raise, raise havoc in there. We have to help cover part of that, so...
They had quite a turnout this year.
They did have a very good turnout, yes. Yep. This month, we, we dealt with a helicopter crash. Thankfully, he wasn't hurt. So that was a good thing. We had the Northlands Music Festival. That was a three-day weekend. We, we went and covered a toucher truck for Cheshire County. They did a, trying to recall why, why they did it, but I think they were doing it as a, the county run as a fundraiser. So we ended up going down to help out with that. And the same day, they had a, a few people were able to get up to the Jumanji Parade. So we were asked to get into that.
Did we have a vehicle in that?
Two.
We did?
We did, we had two, yep.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
What else do we have? So again, along with that, that lines of the operations and safety plan, I finished one off for the Cheshire Fair as well, while it was still fresh and easy to, easier to keep going with. So I believe you guys all came down. We did an auto extrication course one night.
Not all.
Oh, wow, yeah, not all.
Two of us. The dedicated ones.
They really loved to point that out, Mick, you see that? They almost got excited about it. You know why? Because it was so rare, Mick, that I ain't there.
That's why everybody were pointing out.
That's a pretty good answer. That's probably what it is.
So, so we did have that.
That was a good exercise to observe. And then when you all came in with, with the other firefighters to indicate the donation and all, that was, it was very helpful to have the opportunity to see the equipment in, in action.
Good.
Good to know. We've been starting to go to a lot more. The Monanok area chiefs meetings usually falls on a day that either Mike or myself are in, and we end up going to those. So it's good information, it's good, good time to collaborate with other chiefs in the area, see what's going on, what, what you, you know, what they're experiencing for needs, helps, what's working, what's not working, so...
How often do you meet?
Once a month.
And how do you find recruitment is throughout that, that group?
They're all in the same boat as we are. It's, it's very slow. So it's very slow for them, so you, it's, it's, you, you, you hire three people, you lose one or two sometimes. It's, you know, it's that whole two steps forward, one back, you know? But we're still making forward progress with it.
We helped them at meetings here.
Oh, did you?
We did, yeah.
We did, it was about a year ago before we did. What was their general name, Jaffrey?
What is our total manpower right now, as of today?
Right now, we're at 32.
Really?
Yep.
It's great progress, boys.
It's 32 is a good number.
So, yeah.
It's a good number, it's the way we were last year. That's a good number.
Yep.
You know?
Over the last, over the last three months, we've hired four new people. And we have, they're all in an EMT class right now. And we've got two more prospects that have come on, come in recently.
And I had one ask me for an application today.
There you go.
Right, right in town.
It's, it's kind of a slow trickle in, but...
Is working all good, the speed of it now? We got a good plan now?
So with, working with Megan, I've, I've typically been handling a lot of that stuff when that, the applications come in. When somebody asks for an application, we give them one with my card attached to it. So it's, it's no longer just me in town and nobody else. They, they have my contact information. So when that application comes back, what we typically do is, any one of the two of the three of us will meet with the candidate and decide whether we want to move forward or we want to hold off. And but there's a, there are a lot of deciding factors, there's a lot of stuff that goes into hiring somebody in the fire service that another job doesn't, you don't have to kind of fit into, right? So once we decide to go forward with that, I bring that application to Megan. And she handles the stuff on her side. We're working really well together to get that information digitized, so it's not, she doesn't have to hand myself and a candidate a package of paperwork for them to take home. That's once we get a, we offer them a conditional employment. Then we, then we do the paperwork, we fingerprint background checks and all that stuff. We've cut that time down from about six weeks to the time that we get that application to three now. We were losing a lot of candidates when we would get an application and it wouldn't, it would be six weeks before we would hear from them, or we would have information for them. So they think we lost interest. So now that we've cut that in half and we're in contact with them and they have my direct contact number, it is working better and we have, we have cut it in half. And Megan is doing a fantastic job of staying in touch with me. And we see Lori shortly after with those, those conditional letters, she signs those. We contact the candidate and most of the time, it's either that day or the next day, they come in and sign their letter. They sign their letter, I bring it back and to get a packet of paperwork and we get it to them as soon as possible. So once we get that digitized, so where they can just go online and fill all that paperwork out, it'll take out that middleman, and I bet it shortens it by another week. So I think that's why we've been able to get more people on right now and get them involved and engaged quickly before they lose any interest. So and like the chief said, I, we've got, he has two more applications that are outstanding and I had another request for one today. So so our recruitment is, I think we're, we're ahead of a lot of the other areas that you're, you're listening to.
We're almost double.
Right. Yep.
That's great.
Why we have you here, could I ask you another question on a different type of subject?
Sure.
On the, what you turned into was to review on the ambulance. I just have a couple of questions. I've been, I read through that. You spent a lot of time in that and definitely into that, and I just want to understand, I, there's two key questions on that that I would like you to give me an answer as far, the two things that stood out to me on that was the hourly rate of the 20, is it really, is that really reasonable? When you figured out all your figures that $20, could, could we get help at that rate? And, you know, there's other things that concern with that. There's benefits, there's, you know, insurances and all that. So I don't know if you missed that or you have an answer for me on that one. And my second question on the same thing would be, when you figured out all these figures on where it would come, is, is it 100% of these calls paying us? Or do we put in effect that some of them don't have money and they ain't gonna pay, they're not gonna pay us, right? So those are the two things that I could see that could throw that off a little. And I, I'd just like to hear your reply on those two things.
Sure, sure. So what I gave you was, obviously, the, in the first part, it shows the amount of unbillable calls. Right? So there's, there's part of that that, that knocks that down. Right, so in that top line, there's a 20% of that is unbillable. So the 20% of the 750 figure on last year's numbers brings that down. And then as, as we put in beside that, there are some back-to-back calls, right? We, we do a lot of, a lot of times throughout the year, we have calls that are within, and I don't mean they come in right side-by-side kind of thing, but it's in a timeframe that we, if we were utilizing the ambulance in a, in a transporting time, we wouldn't be able to make up that second call, make it to that second call, right? So we factored that in as well. And to answer your, your, about the hourly pay, yeah, that's, we're, that's kind of like right in the middle. I spoke with the Keane chief and they said they're starting their people out at $24 an hour. And I looked up on the Brattleboro Fire Department, their website, they put all their pay, their pay rates right out online. And they're starting somewhere in the $18, 15 to $18 range. Whether you have, now, part of that is $15 is if you don't have your EMT. If you've got your EMT, they're doing the 18 to, and, and part of that's some experience, but the 18 to $20 range. So we're right in the middle of that.
So what would it cost for a backup ambulance? Because obviously, if you're missing 50 calls, people still gotta respond. As far as I know, Mutually doesn't do ambulances. There's gotta be some kind of...
Well, and that, and that part has to play out with, with speaking with our partnering towns, you know? The Winchesters, the Troyes, Fitzwilliam, even, even Cheshire County for that matter, you know? We all can't do this alone, you know?
Oh, no, I understand that. I guess, that's obviously gotta be a cost, though.
So, no, it could be. It could be a cost. It could be just as simple as a, as a discussion of, you know, we're here to help you, can you help us? So I would hope that, you know, some of the surrounding towns, we should be able to get that. But, you know, that's a discussion to have later on, I think.
Yeah, this is a large movement here. I, I don't know if I'm wording it right, but...
Yeah, no, it absolutely is.
That's a lot to, you know, there's a lot of risk involved there and there's a lot of, and a lot of this is almost, to me, is trial and error too, and like, you know, is it gonna work? It's hard to say if that could work. To me, the way I look at it, I don't know. I mean, I'm sure you guys feel the same way, am I right?
It has to work.
Right. Before we get into any further into this, is there anything in, in the rest of what you presented to us that you want to cover? And then are you prepared to have a discussion with regard to the ambulance?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, the rest of it's just a lot of, it's, it's a lot of the same stuff. There's a lot of, of, you know, continued day-to-day operations that we have to get done. And a lot of, there's a, there's been a lot of big, big things as far as events, like I said, events that have gone on around the area that we've, you know, we're pretty, pretty excited that we did cover it and have covered it. So.
And the good news, if I understand it, is the growth.
Yes, yeah, and our growth, our growth has been very good, so. So I'm pretty pleased with that.
If I can just address that for just a second, we have, we put on some, we put on some young people who are members of the town, they've grown up in town and they're gonna, they want to stay in town. So from my point of view, the way that I look at it is, the three of us are not here forever. Okay? I'm retired, Chief Burke is retired, Eric is getting pretty close. So the three of us are, are not gonna be here forever. What we're doing is we're bringing these people, these guys in and we're training them the right way. Our department is, is growing and we're training them right away. We're replacing a lot of us who are aging out. You know, it's certainly more of a young man's game than, than you would, than you would think by looking at the age of the department. But we've hired, we've hired a lot of good people in the last year. And these are people who are, that are through a good amount of training and you don't always see it, it's not always online, like the, like the training we did the other night, if you've been on the Swansea Community page, we put our training on the other night. It's the internal stuff. It's the stuff on when we, how to teach them how to use a radio, you understand that more than probably anybody. How to use a radio and how to communicate and how to do all of the day-to-day stuff that's out of, out of the eye. So we're, we're building the future of the department in what we're doing right now with our, with our recruiting and our, and our retention, and that's, that's a direct, I think it's a direct view of what the chief, Chief Burke and myself are doing. But the behind-the-scenes stuff that the fire chief is doing, it should be a more of a direct reflection on a lot of the stuff that he's doing, the environment that's growing in the department all the time. So I just wanted, I wanted to get that out there. I think a lot of times, he doesn't get enough of the credit. We as a team get a lot of that credit, but he is, he is the fire chief and as the, the leader of the team really, doesn't get that. And I think it's important for every once in a while for, especially for, for us to recognize the amount that he does behind the scenes. We get a lot of it because, you know, as, as this team, but there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that a lot of people don't know. And I just wanted to, to point that out.
Are you, are you addressing the esprit de corps aspect of it as well?
Absolutely. If you were to, to have looked at our training the other night, the chief and I sat and, and talked about it for just a minute. If you're unfamiliar with what we did, we do an exercise every year where we wear all of our gear and breathe all of our air out of our air bottles to see how long we can make it last. So if you have to go into a fire, the staff officers and the firefighters alone know how long it, relatively how long it's gonna take for them to run out of air. Last year, we discussed that we played basketball for three-on-three basketball, and you see how long your air can last, but in all of your gear. This year, we went into the Monadnock Gym and played a modified game of dodgeball, six-on-six on either side. And you run it around for a long time, throw in a ball. Where it was modified was if somebody caught the ball you threw, or if you got hit by a ball, you went to the side, did 10 jumping jacks, and then you were able to come back in. We picked jumping jacks because in the fire scene, in the fire situation, a lot of times you're working up above your head and it can cause you to breathe really heavy when you're working above your head. So we picked jumping jacks to do. And the only time you were out of the game is when you were out of air. And the first person was out in 14 and a half minutes, and the last person we had that was out was 28 minutes. So we had a great time doing it. Nobody got hurt, which is always a bonus. And then the camaraderie that it builds in, because it was, it wasn't just one station against another station, it was all mixed up. And you listen to the members talk afterwards. And everybody's talking to each other and they're joking as they're getting their stuff put back in service. It's a team-building thing. It's a confidence-building thing. It's a, it's a, it's a training thing. We actually, you, we don't get to use our equipment like that as often as firefighters did, you know, back in the day. So it's, it's very good.
Do the young guys do it? Did you guys do it too?
We all did it.
You did it, you did it? Mike, you did it?
Mike was sick that night, but he's, he is going to do it with some of the, we had, I think, four or five people who were unable to make it for, with excused absences. So, but we all do it. So...
So for old guys, he's doing pretty good, huh?
Not bad.
Not bad. Pretty proud of you.
Not bad. So it's a, it was, there were, there were pictures on the community page. I didn't know he didn't do the 28 minutes.
Oh, I didn't. He reached the 14 minute, huh?
You're damn right I did. He did 24, 24 and a half? So that's, it's quite the range, and there are quite a few things that, that can cause you to use more air at different times and all that stuff. So I have my excuses, but I won't make them. But if you look at the call responses after we do a training like this, last month we did, HR came in, Megan came in, and we had almost the entire department came in for training. Of course, we fed them good food and, but everybody came in. The unfortunate part was that as soon as we sat down to eat, we had a call. And a few of us had to leave, and the call snowballed until where everybody had to leave and we had to cancel the training. But we got everybody there. And you look at what happens after we get everybody to a training like that, our call response numbers go up. The communications go up. We had a much better officers meeting. A much better, a better communication. We got some stuff hashed out. So those things are, those things are big for us, in, in my opinion. So.
I think that's great.
Good for you.
Thank you.
It's those kinds of activities that make it fun.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. If you, you know, we, we throw food at them at first and that gets them in the door, you know? No, it's, anytime we can sit down and have, have a meal together and have good conversation, all that stuff, it's good. We don't do it often, but we do it when we can.
Who cooks?
I do.
Hot dogs and beans?
You'd be amazed. I'll have to show you pictures.
So when are we playing dodgeball fire against Town Hall?
They get blown away. They're not gonna take it. They're not taking it.
We're worried about them getting hurt, them old guys, they get hurt.
Hey, we almost pulled it out.
We almost pulled it off, right?
With your help. Anything else?
It was nice. Thank you guys for coming in.
My, just my, my parting thoughts with regard to the ambulance that Jim talked with you about. I don't know that you're prepared to discuss it tonight. We do appreciate the, the information. It would be helpful to, to understand, at least from our perspective. We're, we're looking at it from a, from a financial aspect. You may be looking at it from a different perspective, and it would be helpful to know that. We have a known. We, we know that we have good service from Cheshire EMS with, with your team. We know that's operating well. We know what the budget numbers are, are going to be roughly, but we will know certainly by the end of, by the end of the year. What, what I think is helpful is that if, if you can come back with, if, if this is something you want to do, I think you have to be able to explain what's the benefit to the town. We, we know what the benefit is with Cheshire EMS doing it. What's the benefit if Swansea does it? To me, that would be the first. Then how do we get there? I think Mark touched on it, is we, we need to budget immediately for, for two ambulances. One for immediate, one for the following year with the anticipation that the current ambulance would be utilized when one of the other ones are going through maintenance. So those are two fairly substantial costs, along with the ongoing maintenance costs for the vehicles. The supplies, the, the supplies are gonna, if not double, I mean, if not triple, they're at least gonna double, going from one ambulance to fully outfitting two or three. Staffing, I think, given how difficult it is to hire, I, I think we'd be closer probably to what Keane is, is paying, $24. But I would want to see what the overtime budget is anticipated to be, what the shift differential is anticipated to be. You, you've got eight, eight crews, eight two, two-person crews. What about vacation? Do, do we need, do we need to have another pair just to cover for vacations? Backup service, we're gonna need to contract for backup service. Is that gonna be Winchester? I know personally, I'd feel more comfortable if Cheshire or Keane was our backup. No, no, nothing against Winchester or Troye, Fitzwilliam, but those are volunteer. I'd, I'd feel more comfortable with, again, a, a full-time department as our backup. The, the last time we had a quote for backup... The, the last time we had a quote for backup service, I think was in either fifteen or sixteen, when Mark Howard came in, we were paying about in the low thirties for Delusio, for primary service, and Keen offered backup at fifty-four thousand. So that's ten years ago. I'm assuming that's roughly a hundred thousand dollars. So I think for, for my help, it would help me to understand the, the beginning of it. What's the benefit to Swansea? And, and then a more total package. Again, just from the standpoint of employees, look, look at all the work that you're doing and how well you've, you've done. You've doubled. You, the, the last time we really talked was eighteen people. You're, you're going to be at thirty-five by the end of the fall with, with what you've already got going on. How, how do we attract the group that we're going to need to staff the, the ambulances on a full-time basis? And then as Jim mentioned, the, the benefits that come along with that. So where, where's the true cost?
Right. So I think part of that is, part of that is, we're not looking to just staff an ambulance. We've got to get out of that mindset. You're, you're hiring firemen that are also cross-trained as EMS. And I understand that eighty-plus percent is EMS. But your true benefit to this as well is you also have, would have at least two full-time people available twenty-four hours a day. Now that's the, the calls in the middle of the night for, you know, an alarm going off. That's the, you know, all the, the little, the little items that get handled. You know, that any one of us usually gets up in the middle of the night for those type of calls. They would also cover the, the ambulance part as well. But, so you're, you're, you're hiring to start that part of it.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. That makes sense. But then there's the rest of it, the capital expense and, and all that would, would be incurred. And then Jim brought up the, the unbillable and you, you address that. Is that unbillable because they can't be billed? Or is that unbillable because they didn't pay? So if, if it's unbillable because they can't be billed, then out of the remaining eighty percent, we, we know that there's six percent taken off the top and all that, but of the remaining eighty percent, how much of that eighty percent is going, is going to pay? Or how much are we going to have to write off? That's, that's there.
That is. That's what I took off.
So, so the unbillable means twenty percent just will not pay?
Just, yeah, you're not even going to see that.
It doesn't mean that they're not billable. They, they're billed.
You're either, you're either not, that's, you're either not going to see that payment or it's unbillable because it, you know, no, no transport, you know, we, we do some of those as well. You know, part of that's, that's that. There's, there's a, yeah, there's a whole host of different, different reasonings for it. But yeah, that's, that's that twenty percent right there, gone.
But Eric, if you can get some of these things that Billy talked about, it would help us because you've got to look at where we sit, right? We're looking at the county, they're doing a great job, right? We know what we're paying. It's easy for us to budget this. This is a lot of unknowns that we have to answer to the taxpayers and say, why'd we gamble this shot when we had something that we knew? We know what our evil is. We know it's right in front of us. We know our numbers. We know what they, they're capable of. I would love to see this work for us. This would be phenomenal for the town. This would be the best that we could do. I agree with all of that. But we still have to have all those things answered that Bill brought up. Those are all key things that we have to be loaded, you know, as selectmen and sitting here, you know? And I think this is a fantastic start. You, you got everybody's mind moving, you know? That, that's where you start. You know, you start from ground level. That's what you did. You, you enlightened us to, hey, there's something there that could be changed, you know? But now if we're going to, if you're going to dig into it, now we've got to get all the other little stuff answered. You know, and I think that's what Bill's trying to say. Am I correct? Yeah. So that's my point.
Anything else, boys? You're doing a hell of a job.
I loved thirty-two guys. That's, I didn't expect that for an answer. I thought Mick was going to say twenty-two, to be honest with you. And when he said thirty-two, I had to look at him twice to see if he was looking up in the sky and just coming up with that. Thirty-two is a great number.
That's awesome. Just remember though, the new people we bring on, the majority of them, they're two years from being kind of what I would call a really productive member of our department. So even though we have bolstered our numbers, it's for the future more than today.
Yeah, and I get that whole future thing, but we need old timers like you for leadership. You know, we don't expect you to throw the hose over your shoulder. That's for the young guys, but you to tell them where to run with the hose is important to us. You know, you guys with your knowledge and, and all your experiences, we're fortunate to have that. You know, and I understand you can't run up and down stairs like you used to, but that's what we got the young guys to do, right?
Every once in a while.
I know. I know yous all do it. I seen it. I, I witness it. I go. When I hear a fire, I try to go. I bend the two and Mick, thank you for showing me around and all of you guys were very nice.
That's it. That's the good part about having a good, to do whatever I want on the fire ground. He runs the whole show. So I get to show you what, what's going on and explain what was happening.
No, but that was exciting to go to these fires and watch and witness, and I'm going to go to more if I have an opportunity. I want to get up on that big truck. I want to hold on to that hose.
There's an issue in town?
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Sounds like we got a new member.
So the next time, the next time we do this breed down drill, we'll, we'll invite you guys to participate.
I think I can do twenty-six minutes.
You're on.
Let's go get it.
I think I could do twenty-six, Bill.
I think you could do twenty-eight.
I pitched that whole game and you didn't have to bring the bullpen in when, right?
We should have.
There was no bullpen. There was nobody warming up in my bullpen.
That was impressive, I have to say.
Right?
Thanks very much.
Great meeting, guys. Thank you for coming. We need to do that more often.
So we have, next item on our agenda, I'm going to just skip around for people's benefit, is status of the Grange Hall committee. Is that what you all are here for, Lillian? Well, come on up.
Yeah. Sure.
Here, there, wherever it's comfortable.
What's the date?
Alan, you're welcome to come up.
I missed my invitation this morning. I did. And I, and I, I qualify.
Yeah, I can go whenever.
What invitation you talking about?
You couldn't have gone today. Today was a senior coffee connection. I know, but you don't qualify. You're not there yet. You got to be AARP.
You're, you're just a young pot.
This one for you.
What is it you're giving me?
One for you. I did not purposely ignore your invitation today. I'm sorry. It's just client stuff came in, came in the way. But I did appreciate that you recognized that I am a senior and it would have been my pleasure to be at the Senior Coffee Connection.
Well, Lori was, I told them I got an invitation too, so.
Well, but she wasn't allowed, but...
I've been to a couple of them.
Well, you're, you're senior too.
I know a couple of them. I don't know if you guys have, I'm just saying.
But I got one and an invitation.
Oof. You're doing well.
Well, we're here at the, at the request of the board and I'm Lillian Chiracella and this is our committee.
And we're...
And we're...
Rob Terry.
And another member has a commitment, a school commitment, Linda McCullough. So we are here, so...
I think we're, we're at a, at a situation as we were with, with Wickham Hall about eight or nine years ago. And at least with Wickham Hall, I, and, and the reason I bring that up, I, I think the question, or I know the question that I, I often hear is, what, what's the purpose? What, what's, what, what purpose will the building fulfill? And when, when one considers that the project is at least a million, if not a million and a quarter to, to bring the building with, with infrastructure up, up to where it needs to be to, to, to sustain a purpose, it, it's been very difficult to define a use that would justify that, that, that expenditure. And, and that's what we've, that's what we've struggled with when, when Sly and Ken and I were on the board and now the three of us, previously with Michael and now with Lori, is, is really understanding how, how we can justify that expenditure. And we understand that the historical aspect, that, that part's understandable, but again, investing a million dollars, the, the comments that people make to me is that as a selectman, we should be looking at needs and understanding there's wants, but looking at needs. And, and one of the things that Swansea has been very good at is we've been very frugal with our expenditures and, and we've accomplished a lot as a community over the last ten or twelve years through the use of grants and, and prudent spending. And the town's much different today than it was back then in terms of infrastructure and, and, and improvement. So that's the biggest challenge, is determining a use that, that would support the expenditure of a million and a quarter. So you all are on the committee. So that, for, for me, I don't want to speak for my colleagues or Lori, but it would be helpful to understand what your vision is. I know I've heard talk about a senior center. I was involved with the Keen Senior Center when they moved from a building that they owned to a, a location that they're leasing. And, and that was, I wasn't involved in the, the budgeting aspect, but as a Realtor and listening to them, it was, they didn't want the responsibility of owning a building anymore. It was, it was more cost-effective to go into a lease situation. So if, if Keen is having that challenge, how, how would we in Swansea develop a, a senior center that would generate the revenue needed? Wickham Hall isn't there, but it's close to break even with, with the increased events that are coming in in, in relation to the costs that we have. When we, when we complete the Town Hall renovation, most of the board meetings will then be able to be held at the lower level of Town Hall, which will free this space up for more rental. So this will become a, a revenue generator that will be helpful when it comes time to repair the roof and repaint it and, and all of that. So how, how do you envision the Grange coming to that point? How, how do we get there? What, what's your goal and how do we get there? So the reason we wanted to talk to you was we, we seem to be essentially treading water. We, we, the town spent a hundred and, I guess, ten thousand on a new roof, which stabilized things. We have a quote of a hundred and sixty-five thousand to redo the foundation and, and those two just simply stabilized the building. They, they don't get it, they, they don't get into the more expensive aspects of it. So you guys have the passion for it. So what, go for it.
Well, I think I can start by saying the building is a historic structure, built in nineteen sixteen and it is on the national registry. So looking at the building as being part of Swansea's center, it certainly is within that whole historic district we're talking about. Certainly Mount Caesar, Temple, Potters Hole, Carpenter Home and many of the other homes. I believe one of them built in the seventeen hundreds. So looking at that, I think we all share commonal of staying at a historic Swansea structure with ties to the agricultural heritage of this community. Purpose for the building, there's been a lot said about purpose. Certainly our idea would be to have it as a community center, one portion of it being seniors being able to use that building. I think it's successful with our senior coffee connections in the past two years and we did get a really good turnout. We just had Ashley Crosby with us this morning and she talked about the connection between the rec center and the use of the building. So we're, we're branching out, we're looking at community organizations being able to use the building. I know the original Patrick quote was a million dollars, but with the taxpayers' approval of the roof, we want to look in the direction of small segments of restoration. Too extensive preservation, but certainly restoration, so the building would be usable. And I guess my committee members can see on the other hand, but I always look at that as, as what I thought the purpose of the building should be.
Thank you.
You mentioned multi-millions to, you know, bring, bring it up. I, I don't, I don't think it would be that expensive. For example, you also mentioned a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar foundation repair, which, was that through a reputable foundation person or?
Your advisor was conducted by Joe DeRusso, the DPW director. He brought a contractor through, he's, he's done it a couple of times actually, to review the status of the current foundation and make a determination as to what's needed, if anything. And it could have been, they could have come through and said, no, it's fine. But that wasn't, that wasn't the case. The quote was a hundred and sixty-five and, and it could be higher, it could be lower, but even if it's at a hundred and fifty, that, that's clearly a, a number that would be supportable.
The, about a month ago, we had a reputable foundation person come in and look at it very carefully. He spent almost a half a day with us and his quote was considerably less than that, twenty-two thousand dollars, for example. And, and we, that's the question I was going to ask is if we were to keep the dialogue going on this building, who among people in the Town Hall, should we interact with?
Joe DeRusso.
We need to change, exchange ideas.
It'd be Joe DeRusso and you could coordinate that through Lori. But DPW director is responsible for the facilities. So he would be the one that would, for example, review the information provided by the contractor that you mentioned. You could share that with, with Joe.
See, he would be the public works.
Yes, he's the director.
Office of the Town Hall Action.
He, he's somebody that if he hasn't been, you could invite or you provide us with contact information. We can, whoever in your group is, would be the point person. You, you all could connect and he could come through and explain the difference of, at least from his perspective, what, what he looked at with the contractors that he brought through and perhaps you could share with him what, what your experience was.
Well, I agree with Lori, that much for the foundation repair is way, way, way too much. Really, truly don't think it should or will cost that much. That's only one example. So, and we, you know, we, we have time on our side, split manpower on the city and, and, you know, seek out good deals here and there. So I guess I would, I would urge you to rethink it. I think, I, I think that in the end it could be most affordable.
I think the quote too is just kind of a ballpark figure because obviously it would have to go to the voters, anything like that, and then we would have to go out for, we would ask for...
would ask for requests for proposals so contractors would come out and bid on it. And I know from working in the past on those historic buildings, you have to have, certain standards have to be met. So it's, I don't know who you had for a contractor, but they have to be really stringent with, I forget what it's called, but like the, there's certain standards that they have to meet on those historic buildings and they have to actually be qualified to do the work on that. So if, you know, it were to go to the voters or even for, you know, because you could find matching grant funds if it was 165,000, you know, L-Chip, I don't know if you've heard of L-Chip, but they, you know, they'd do a 50/50% match. So if it were to go on the town ballot to vote, you know, but anyway, I think that the 165 was kind of like a placeholder to see what do we have, what do we need to ask of the voters to fix the building. But it would go out for RFP. So we would have, we have to follow, we have certain policies that we have to follow too in to putting it out for bid.
I look at the building and the long article for the repair of the roof, certainly we have a lot of town people who approve that for 100,000 dollars. So they are invested in that building, it was clear to me, I'm sure to many others, that they want the building to be repaired. So I look at that kind of in relation to my own home. Why would you spend 100 or 110,000 to fix the roof and then not bother to continue?
The rationale was to stabilize the building. Normally you would start with the foundation and work your way up, but we were told there were some structural issues, there were some water penetration and that it doesn't take long. Once a roof goes, the building pretty much follows. So the, again, the concept was it would be a stabilizing effect. I agree with you, $100,000 to fix a roof if you're not going to go further, but it seemed like it would give an opportunity for the community at large to have a voice. I agree with you with regard to the fact that the town did support the 100,000. What I don't know is whether they would support the 100,000 if they knew it was a million dollar project. And could it be less, Robert? Sure. Could it be a lot more? I can tell you from experience, it could be a lot more, although construction, I mean, material costs are coming down. But this was just an effort to stabilize so that we'd be able to make a prudent decision. And that's again, why, I think it was either Joe or Steve Biddle, one of them, recommended not moving forward with the windows until the foundation was secured because the building would have to be jacked up. There was a proposal by a former selectman that the best place for that building is to be moved back and get it off the road more. Those kinds of discussions should be had, but you could hit a million, I can assure you, you could hit a million pretty quickly.
I just wanted to throw in a few more comments. It is a unique cultural building in a part of Swansea, which is a very historic portion of it. And I just want to say today, we had like 22 people there for the senior connection, which is a really awesome thing that you guys have inspired to happen. But there's a lot of other community events that took, could take place there, including after school programs, community events. It is worth considering. I do ask you to look at that as we go ahead with this process because I think it is worth saving and it would be a great resource for the town. So, thank you.
My opinion on the little of this is what I hear is being out there is a lot of that is compared to this, this building that we sit in. And one of the things that I see people say is that they raised a lot of money to help with this building. And I feel you're weak on that part where I think you should put your committee and if people start to see you raise money and like we talked about matching what you could raise and it was just thrown out, everybody said, well, that's ridiculous. But I think if the community and the taxpayers see that there's people involved and there's raising of money, it's going to strengthen you as a team to bring this together. And I think you're lacking on that end because I hear a lot of that. Well, they should raise money. Look at what they did with the Wickham Hall. And I know it's apples and oranges here. I know that the money came from different aspects, but I think you should try to focus on trying to raise money to show people that there is interest and show the right, right? Now you get people more involved and say, wow, look at they raised $20,000 or they raised this, you know? I think you're lacking in that aspect and that's just my outside view of what I hear. And I'm only telling you this not in any insulting way, I'm just telling you this could help.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we did apply for the CDFAs grant twice, one with Julius's help, and we were denied that raise money. And then we also applied for the moose plate grant. And oddly enough, feedback in that regard, because we didn't get the CDFA or the moose plate, was that the building didn't have any kind of programming. So here's the catch, building isn't usable, therefore, programming is non-existent. So we took upon ourselves to add our very elite outhouse to the property. And so at least when we started coffee connections two years ago, we were able to utilize the building with the addition of the outhouse. Recently, we applied or nominated for the seven to save, and I think we were sent all of that information. And we have been designated by New Hampshire Preservation Alliance as a building worthy of being preserved. So that announcement will come out tomorrow.
Yeah, we received that award tomorrow over in Exeter.
Yeah, I think your goal would be to stop any more damage to the building, which was the roof, right? Which you did stop that. Now stabilization of the building, now you buy yourself some time to raise. So you want to stop the process of it going worse and stop, you know, make it at a stand still, which is the roof. And like Bill said, the foundation is going to be the important thing. Now you've got to stabilize, now we've got time to breathe, you know, there's no more damage is going to be done to it, it's going to stay in that position. And then I think fundraisers is going to be important. So I think the focus is of stabilizing that building right now and look at everything else behind it later. If I was on your group, that's where I would push to. And I would start off a fundraiser, how can we stabilize this building and get the foundation and try to raise money? And then maybe else, other people would get involved and we could find some money. But that's where I would go if I was on with you, sitting with two guys. That's my suggestion.
I think you have a lot in your favor too, like being recognized as one of the seven to save, that's, you know, grant wants, they want to support that. I think if you could come up with more of an objective, like this is our goal, like what other programs are going to benefit from this besides seniors with coffee, which is great, you know, but what other cultural uses? If you kind of set, you know, a goal and have those objectives, then funders will want to support that. So like working with Ashley, that's a great thing. And education, you have the Carpenter Home right there. Maybe we can link something in there. But I think you have to have a bigger goal of let's just save the building. I went through the whole grant process in Ringe with their meeting house, which is also on the National Historical Registry. And the application, they're very picky and choosy about who they lend to, but it's worth a shot. But I think you need to have that, you need to really pitch, this is why we need the funding, you know, and how much of the community is going to benefit from this cultural and historical building.
Is it still going to get painted by that guy that volunteered?
Did you guys hear from the painter or anything like that?
Lori Rose, he needs some kind of document that gives, the board gives him permission to paint the building.
I thought we did that.
He wasn't able to get to it in the spring because of the amount of rain that we had. And then we went into the terrific heat, so he was really backed up. But he's looking at early spring. And again, that will be done gratis. It will be scraped and painted and clapboard will be replaced.
Oh, so you've been in contact with him?
I have.
Good, good. So it's still there?
Yes.
That's great.
He's a Swansea resident, he's not going anywhere. He hasn't received any documentation, seen yet, he has got a project.
I thought he was supposed to get ahold of Joe DeRusso. That was what, when he was here, we had told him to contact Joe.
We can check on that.
We'll check on it.
That's an easy resolution. So just to echo Jim, just by comparison, this, we were at a stage where the committee that was in form, that was formed then, was a committee that promoted social, small scale social events. And the change had to be, to echo Jim's, to a committee that had a contractor background to some degree, not professionally, but some knowledge, but more importantly, access to people with the grant, that have grant opportunities. Pete Johnson obviously was, this was his passion, and unfortunately, he's passed away or he would, he had those contacts. And I think that's where Jim is going with it. The town contributed, I believe, just under 30% to this project. And in the beginning, it was a struggle. We had to convince in private sessions with the CIP to put in $10,000 or $15,000 because they just wanted to zero it out. But we were able to convince them to put small amounts of money in, in order to attract the grants. Back then, there was no real purpose here. There wasn't a real use. The facility was for all intents and purposes closed. So it's not all that much different from what you're facing at the Grange. And they navigated through that. Mike Amarlo might be able to help you. John Trainer, who was here, he was a big participant. Sharon and Kenny Greatbatch, and I'm sure I'm forgetting a lot of other people, but I think if you reach out to them, they may have information as to how they overcame the hurdle that you're experiencing. L-Chip, that was, that Lori's talking about, that was a huge grant that I think was 250,000 that came in. But again, the town's portion, as I view it for what we're talking about, is almost 100% for the Grange, whereas here it was just under 30%. And we, I think as Jim mentioned, in order to get voter support, again, I go back, if we were a town meeting and the opportunity came up to replace the roof for 100,000, you know darn well, somebody's going to raise a question of, well, what's the end game? What's it ultimately going to cost? And then when the number of a million or a million two is brought up, that's a hiccup moment. Whereas when it's on the ballot, that context isn't there. So I wouldn't, I don't disagree with you, I just don't fully agree with you. I just don't think the voters or the taxpayers really understand the full commitment. So anything that can be done, and Lori can help you, we had a nice meeting two weeks ago with Chris Coats from the county, and he's consistently offered us the services of their grant writer. They have a grant writing program, a program which Anne Heffronan is continually making us aware of, to her credit. Lori can put you in contact with them. And there have to be grant opportunities that recognize, as Lori mentioned, the award that you're getting, more importantly than the fact that there's really no ongoing programming, because your programming is conceptual, as you mentioned and Lori tied in with. There's a lot that can be done, but we can't do it now because the wiring's not right, the plumbing's not there and all those things. But we got to get them in order to do it and it can be done. Our point in meeting with you was not to stop anything. Our point was to try to figure out a memo that would address some of the comments that Jim has made and Lori has made and help move the process forward. That was our goal. It wasn't to shut it down.
See if the wheel can keep turning.
You mentioned that with the Wickham Hall committee, that I'm shaking at the board as the selectmen went to the CIP meetings in support of getting some money and putting their line items. Would that be a possibility with us?
Well, there is a select board member. I was there for the last, I think, three years or four years, or three years. Sly was there previously, Jim is there now. The select board does have a member.
I mean, for support.
We did. We supported, Michael could address it. We supported, was it 75,000, I think, last year? Wasn't that what it was? And it was with the understanding that the Grange would raise the other 75,000. And that was because of, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but this year, there was a placeholder in there for 150,000. And so we took it in bites and that 75 was going to, and then what was it, deliberative?
It got zeroed out.
It got zeroed out. But to answer your question, on the committee, because it was me, did promote the idea of 75,000. So it did come from the select board.
I guess probably had the 75,000, there's no way we could raise 75,000.
That's the question, and that's what Jim is bringing up. So how do we get there? What steps can we take? What people do we need to get involved that can help us get there? And that's really what, when the Wickham Hall committee changed, and I'm sure there were some feathers ruffled, but when it changed and these other people came in, that was the catalyst that got things moving because of the connections that they had. That's what we got to find.
So I guess I'm hearing that the selectmen and the county director, everybody is on board as far as steering us in the right direction to get this grant money up, so that we can, am I correct?
But with the understanding that the grant funding is absolutely critical to being able to do that. And I think as Lori mentioned, having the conceptual programming in mind, the senior community center, what are you going to do? I just came back from my old hometown and all I could think of was Swansea. Where do we have something like that in Swansea? It was a community recreation association, started back in the teens, the other teens. And by a family that was as instrumental in my community as the Lanes were here and the Browns and the Wickhams and all that, were here in Swansea back at the turn of the other century. And it's phenomenal what they've done with a pool and basketball and the programming that's just, it's a multimillion dollar operation that they have. And I was just saying, where can we do that in Swansea? We can't do it in Wickham Hall, we can't do it in the Grange Hall. So we don't have that facility. But the point is, we look at what's happened with this building. And if you can visualize that for the Grange Hall, it'll, and get the right connections to connect with the Kingsberrys and the Putnam's and the others that will donate and start to build momentum so that the L-Chip becomes a reality. That 250,000 is a, is it still 250? Anyway, it was 250. I'm sure it still is because everybody, when they do a transfer, their property transfer, there's an L-Chip fee that appears at the bottom of their settlement statement. So I think it's both visualizing and then bringing in people that can help, as Jim mentioned, with the fundraising. But it's got to come that way. I don't, I personally can't support going to the taxpayers every two or three years for 50,000, 100,000, 75,000. I just, by the time you get to 300,000, now you're redoing the roof or you're redoing something. It was the same thing with the school. You know, if the school had just bonded 15 years ago and done the things they needed to do, that bond would almost be paid off. It would have cost Swansea a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. Instead, they, it was pay as you go. It was a million dollars a year. Every million dollars was 600,000 to Swansea. So it's the same kind of concept. How do we financially get there? I can't tell you, other than how it worked here.
Can we thank Jimmy because he helped us with our recent motorcycle tour on the six person.
Whatever I can do to help. And in the future, just call me and I'm willing to help in any ways, but I think we need to push on that more. No, it's a great thing.
And talk with them about the event that he and others put on at Tempestas three weekends ago. That was extremely well attended and the plans that they have for next year are even more significant than that. And is there a way that either we could duplicate that with the Grange or is there a way a way for the Grange to participate in that?
We just did a nonprofit one, we raised twelve thousand, that he went to, and we raised twelve thousand, right, for nonprofit, I think it was?
Yeah, that was distributed across, I think, six nonprofits.
Correct, two thousand apiece.
So maybe that's something you, you know, you could participate in.
What would be your end vision for it? Think of that, and then how is that going to benefit the people of Swansea? Just something to think about, you know?
You may need a larger committee, Lillian. It's not unusual to have a...
How many?
Well, there's five. So it's not unusual to have an executive board with a larger committee, that the worker bees, so to speak. And as Laurie mentioned, if you can present that vision so people have something to work towards you, where you have the barometer that Jim mentioned, where your goal is to raise a hundred thousand, and you've raised ten, and that red line just keeps incrementally going up.
I'll give you the markers.
Well, our committee of five actually, I think it was developed so we could be a liaison between the Grange, goals, and the town, the selectmen. The Swansea Preservation Society is our fundraising honor. So again, there are a lot of people that are part of that organization. And so, you know, again, we can draw on from that as far as this fundraising effort goes.
Thank you all for coming in.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thanks for what you're doing. Thank you, Robert. Let us know who the person is that we should put in contact with Joe and Laurie to further expand on the information regarding the foundation, anything else having to do with the building.
Go to, thank you.
It would be beneficial, it would be for us if we could just have a meeting with everybody involved, to have a hold of the foundation, what it really means. Throwing out a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand is scary, and it's just a figure that was kind of capital. So I would really like to get this nailed down to what it's actually going to be.
A hundred-and-sixty-five is the most accurate quote that we have. As Laurie mentioned, there'd have to be plans developed that would go out through an RFP process, it could come in lower, it could come in higher. So once it's fully understood, the engineering is done to indicate what the repairs are that are needed.
Is there any kind of timeframe for that?
This was just developed, this is, there's, they wanted to, if I understand correctly, they wanted to have a number as a placeholder for CIP, because we're in the middle of the Capital Improvement Committee budget now, and that was what drove that particular exercise. It is a big number.
It is a big number. It would scare people away from even donating.
Well, but again, that's the, I think that's where Jim and Laurie are coming from. If you can provide the vision and the means by which to get there, people will support it. If, this was a million-dollar project, and the town put about three hundred thousand into it, in terms of grants and other things that the town was able to secure, plus direct taxpayer payments. But we knew ahead of time what this building was going to be, because you could see it. And we knew how we were going to end up using it. We had a pretty good idea of what the overall budget was going to be. And Robert, I agree with you, it would be great if that number came in at half of a million, but that's just not where we are right now. And so that's, you do have the engineering, I'm sorry, the architectural plans that Michael did, was that, that was pre-COVID, so seven or eight years ago. So that's a good starting point. Make sure that that plan works for what you envision as the needs. But if you think a hundred-and-sixty-five is going to scare off the fundraising, what do you think it's going to do to the taxpayer? It's the same type of analogy.
Cool, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Robert. All right. Michael, last shot of public input.
I'm all set.
Are you? Are you sure?
I haven't, I haven't got a time to make my list though.
Oh, well, actually, we still have a few items to go through on the agenda, so let's see. Laurie, you, did you, do you have the dam, the Swansea Lake Dam information?
Do you have the dam information? Give me the dam information.
I can do it, I can say that, because that's true.
I can say that.
I did, yes. So this was quite a long process. This was one of the first things that I did come in on here was back in, I think it was June, we sat down and went through ten applicants for the Swansea Lake Dam, and narrowed it down, had three people resubmit applications, and it was a tough decision, they're very competitive. But at the end of the day, the three of us, Adam, Town Planner, and Joe Russo, we are recommending the board go with plus and O'Neill for the engineering services for the Swansea Lake Dam, analysis and remedial repair.
What's the rationale for utilizing them as compared to the others that were close?
Well, like I said, it was tough. They're very well-known, and it was really hard for them to, we asked for, so we asked for three applicants to submit something back to us based on a budget. You know, we know, they don't, they can't really say it's going to cost X, because they won't know that until they actually get in to...
See, they have to do groundwork and check.
Exactly. So they, Placidonial laid it out, and again, I think just, that was our overall, like, you know, our overall top pick, and then with the budgetary proposal that they submitted, they're very unknown.
And what's the amount?
Well, it varies, but it is in there. Their estimate varies.
How do we...
It depends on what they find, so...
Where's the funding coming from?
Well, just for the engineering services, I believe we already have that set aside.
Okay.
Fifty, is it? Do we have fifty thousand set aside for the engineering?
I thought, that sounds right, because I need to mention that. Which is the lowest?
Um, hang on. I should have highlighted it, my eyesight's terrible. So...
Want me to help you?
The bottom, again, this is all going to change, you know, they gave a basis, and it's an estimated fee, but their total for estimated was a hundred-and-forty thousand.
Oh, my God.
So, but they broke it down, went through each of this. I learned a lot going through hydraulic.
It's not in the packet.
This isn't in there, no, no. You know, they break it down, fieldwork, twenty-three thousand eight hundred, confirmed in design criteria, three thousand, geotechnical design services, twenty thousand eight hundred. It's all broken down. Conceptual plans permitting construction.
How does a hundred-and-forty compare with the other bids?
I didn't bring the other bids, and I can't quite remember the numbers, but that was, again, they submitted like a couple different worst-case scenarios, but they were on the low side, Placidonial.
And so we're unsure of how much money is in the reserve?
I think it's fifty thousand for the engineering services.
And so what does a hundred-and-forty cover? But if we award them the contract, are we awarding them the engineering, or are we awarding them the full hundred?
The engineering services.
So the hundred-and-forty is not the number we should be looking at?
No.
So what number should we be looking at?
Would it be just the fieldwork? Because it's not the design, right?
Let me see.
Right? It would be the fieldwork, I would think, right? I don't know, yeah. Because that's the project, isn't it?
I don't know.
That looks to me like it's the project. It's the whole thing.
I was thinking it'd be more than a hundred-and-forty.
I know, but maybe not.
No, that is the whole project. So we propose a budget to be estimated for professional services in support of this effort as outlined below. Lump sum tasks will be billed monthly as a percentage complete, while hourly tasks will be billed on a time and materials basis with the, and the budget would not be exceeded without expressed authorization. So it'd be, they would bill us on a monthly basis, and it wouldn't be any more than a hundred-and-forty.
But we don't have that, we don't know where the money's coming from. If we're relying on...
We thought we was owed this last year, and there was fifty thousand set aside.
Yeah, but you're asking, but you're asking for a hundred-and-forty.
Over the course of the...
So how much are we allocating for engineering services? Are we allocating up to fifty thousand dollars?
This is just to do, to complete the project.
But that's not what the motion's calling for. The motion's calling for engineering services.
Yeah.
It's not construction, it's engineering.
Oh, I see what you mean. Did I type it up wrong?
Yeah, because that was how, we were going to have the engineers come back to us and tell us this is what it's going to cost to go that dam, and that's what we're looking for, right?
I think so, that...
Yeah, that's what I felt was going to happen, but to me, that looks like it's the actual, this is the steps.
It is the actual.
It looks, am I right?
I think I just wrote the motion wrong.
Well, we don't even know where we're getting the one forty anyways further down. We don't even, we didn't even get that file. We thought we'd have the engineer money, right, and get that ball rolling. I think we better put this on hold.
So...
Is there any reason we can't push this off? So they're not going to do anything this fall, are they? Can we push it off till the twenty-second?
Just so we know what that actually is.
This was, I mean, they based it off the request for qualifications that Joe put out.
Right, but we're not confident of where we're going to pull the money. I'm sure we got the, we've got non-restricted funding available, but we don't know. And we don't know if the hundred-and-forty is for the whole project.
Right, but I think this is just going with a certain contractor. I don't think there's like, there's not a fee assigned to it right now.
Can we put it off till the twenty-second?
Sure.
Is there any reason why we can't?
No, I just, they're all waiting to know when I told them. I would let them know tomorrow.
Okay, well, if you can...
Well, how does, explain the motion. Read that motion again, I mean.
Move to award the proposal for engineering services for the Swansea Lake Dam, analysis and remedial repair design.
So we're not moving to accept the one forty initially?
No.
We're not.
No, it's to go with this contractor.
Going with this contract to...
But is it a hundred-and-forty, or is it a lesser amount?
They won't know that. The project, once they get in there...
But for this motion, for this motion, is it a hundred-and-forty more or less, or is it a lower amount that we know? Because this specifically is, they got to analyze...
Their proposal is saying, this is what it's going to cost to go in and do the work for...
But that's not what the motion's calling for. The motion is saying, we're going to analyze the project, we're going to scheme it, not scheme it, we're going to plan it, we're going to design it. And that's incorporated in our engineering services.
So why can't we just put in fifty thousand right here?
I don't even think you need a, you don't need an amount. It's just to accept that with a certain...
If we put that, we're protected, is what I'm saying. If we just filled that amount, fifty thousand, for Swansea Lake Dam.
That would give you the opportunity to grant the award tomorrow, and then on the twenty-second, we could more fully flush it out.
Correct.
So we know what the total budget's going to be.
And then she could go further.
Because that one forty, according to this, does not include the work. It's just the analysis and the engineering.
That's right.
Which may very well be the case. I would think that's what we were doing, but if it's a hundred-and-forty, we need to know where it's coming from.
No, I just, I wouldn't put a number there, because it's just to choose a engineer to perform the duties.
Yeah, but does that leave it wide open? Doesn't that leave it wide open?
We don't, we need to know what it's going to cost, Laurie.
Because now she's going to do a permission.
Yeah, he's, yeah.
And then we get a bill, right?
Right, but are we authorizing, if we have fifty thousand in the reserve, wonder Steve Bill, he's asleep, if we have fifty thousand in the reserve...
Because I was under the impression that this is going in phases too. That's what I gathered from those, the meetings, that everything would be done in phases. And they're saying this is a monthly, we would be, once the work starts, we would be billed monthly.
For the engineering?
For all of this.
Not the construction, but the engineering and the design?
The fieldwork, the dam design, the geotechnical design services, the hydraulic and analysis, all of these, that's what it covers, the permitting.
All right, so that's what, that's a hundred-and-forty, but how do we get from fifty that we have in reserve to a hundred-and-forty? Does it go on the CIP for next year?
I believe, yes, it would have to go on as a warrant article, right? Because how else are we going to get the money for...
Well, it can be part of the, well, what do we have, Michael? We have a...
We have some money.
We have some money in the dam's capital reserve.
We have a reserve for dams?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so, and that comes from the CIP?
Yep, I have it written.
Okay.
I can't give you the number, she might have it right there. Too many dams to have gone along.
Oh, there's a lot.
Yeah, but I do remember something being set aside, fifty thousand, and then obviously the capital reserve on the dams.
But what we have to make sure is if we have fifty thousand, we can expand up to fifty. And at that point, we've got to get something, a number put in for, through the CIP process that we won't know we have until March. So is that fifty going to carry us through?
Well, I think so, because we're not even going to start the project until, so we're not going to be paying anything. We're just awarding them the...
But why wouldn't they start November? There's no reason, there's nothing that they're doing that...
They'd have to submit a timeline to us, which will be part of their services.
Okay, so that's not in their proposal as to what their timing is?
No, we didn't ask for that in the request for proposal.
Okay.
Because they really won't know until they get in there and examine and do all that.
Billy, this is just to get the ball rolling to build, you're right.
That's fine.
Joe, yeah, we put the request for proposal out, we had all the presentations, and that's the selected one that we read on.
Okay. So we have a hundred-and-forty thousand, we can pull it from some non-restricted funds if we need to, we can get it in the CIP if we have an outstanding balance for March.
Yeah.
You comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Town dams. I think it's, according to this, and this could change, but I think we have, we're going to be asking for a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
We have fifteen thousand in there?
We're going to be asking for one-twenty-five, and we have...
From the voters.
And, or do we have fifty?
We have...
Would be fifty.
Let's show it.
Are you looking at a CIP sheet?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What page?
Yeah, it's right here. This is the one forty, and this is why, I bet, why Steve put it in here.
Sure.
That's, we're going to be asking for this from the voters.
Here, he has it somewhere.
All right.
So you're good.
All right.
All right?
Yep.
Fifteen.
Yeah, so we got fifteen, and...
Which is, yeah, that's number here.
Disbursements, that's money that's been spent.
That's right. So this is what we're talking about putting in, and then this number fifteen.
This would be up here. Where's twenty-six? Is this twenty...
Yeah.
Right there.
One-twenty-five.
One-twenty-five.
And then that brings us to one-five, right?
One forty.
That's how it works, right? Okay.
All right.
Want to put a number on it, one forty?
Maybe we don't put no number like, like he says, just like the motion reads, right?
It is just to accept them as a-
Just to accept them.
Cam, I moved to award the proposal for engineering services for the Swansea Lake Dam analysis and remedial repair design. New Hampshire Dam ID, D twenty-three zero zero seven.
And what's the name, Fuss?
Fuss and O'Neil.
Fuss and O'Neil.
So, engineering services to Fuss?
Fuss.
Fuss and O'Neil, here.
Fuss and O'Neil.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Work for that one.
All right, next item on our agenda is awarding the winter heating bid for oil and propane. Boy, I, ooh. So the, the, the winning that we have is discount oil at two forty-four and LNG propane at three point three eight nine, uh, one point three eight nine. Any discussion with regard to that, or are you comfortable with it? You wanna make the motion?
I move to award the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six winter fuel bid to discount oil in the amount of two thousand forty-four cents and to LNG propane for a dollar thirty-eight nine.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. So, do we think we had LNG last year? Because there's a lot of concern there. We have to remove tanks if we switch to another company, and so-
We had them last year.
Okay, we could have-
We didn't have them for oil, but we had them for-
That's all I needed to know. So, all in favor?
Well, well, did, did you have a second?
I second, then I discussed.
So, is there, Swansea Oil served this last year?
Yeah.
Oh, they did?
Yep.
Not just now?
No, I don't believe so, last year. And it, it is a Swansea-based company?
I'm, I'm okay with that, too. I, I use Swansea Oil, so I'm okay with that.
So my understanding was, I looked at that same thing, Billy, cause for two cents, for the local business, and we had them last year, and they did good. I think it's terrible to, to move for two cents and knock a local out. Um, but my understanding was, are we obligated to do the lowest bill, or we have that choice?
We have that choice.
Oh, even better.
We have that choice. I, 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 I think we should go with Swansea Oil. I didn't open my mouth, cause I didn't know we had that power.
I didn't know we could either. That's the only reason I said, cause I'd rather go with Swansea Oil.
We gotta justify it.
They're a local company, supporting the town.
So is that great service size, yeah?
LNG's in Swansea, too, so.
Yeah, what's a hundred gallons at two cents, right? Is it two dollars?
I, I take back my motion, make a new motion that Swansea Oil at two dollars and forty-six cents and LNG propane at a dollar thirty-eight nine.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do we need to reiterate it, or just change the original?
Just change the original, cause the original motion died for, it was, it was amended, and the amendment was approved.
So it's one of the other, just to keep being LNG.
Correct. Okay, did everyone have a chance to read the, in a packet, the quotes with regard to the repair or the replacement of, of part of the Carpenter Home roof?
Yes.
Uh, I, I have to abstain from this, but you comfortable with, with the recommendation?
I, I-
You wanna make that motion?
I move to approve the quote from GDS Landmark Group in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the roof replacement of the Carpenter Home, with the funding to come from the Carpenter Home Common Fund.
Uh, could we just, uh, insert the partial, partial roof?
Okay, I make a motion for the partial roof replacement.
And I, I don't believe it's the Carpenter Home Common Fund. I thought it was the George Whitcomb Jr.
I think it is, yeah.
Common Fund.
Thank you, Bill.
George Whitcomb Common Fund.
George Whitcomb Common Fund.
Do you get those changes, Sue? Okay, all in fa- Jim, you wanna second that?
Yes, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I abstain. Next item on our agenda is the award of the forestry service agreement. Did everyone have a chance to read that in the packet? Any discussion on that? You wanna make that?
I move to authorize Joe Drewsill as the primary contact for the forestry service agreement between the Meadows End Consulting Company for the Tracy Lot Forest Map, two nineteen Lot One.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, can you briefly just give me an idea? So, we're authorizing Joe to, to have communications with that forestry guy that we met here?
Yep.
And take his suggestions on what we should do on that lot?
Yep.
I'm good.
And he'll get out the bid with a harvester?
Good.
Yep, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Memo from planning board, the, uh, planning director.
Did it not, he made it in there, right?
Yeah. You wanna just enlighten the board and the public as to the news that we, we learned?
You learned some news, didn't you?
We, we learned that the Route Ten project that's been worked on for years got taken off the ten-year plan. Remember that, Michael?
Yes, I was ready to have this call today.
Yes, you were.
What are we talking about?
We, we doing the Route Ten in a safer manner than it is now, cause it's very dangerous road.
From basically North Winchester to South Winchester.
So Adam, there's a memo in your packet that Adam-
To Route Ten from, not Winchester, it's right here, right?
Yeah.
So where, how far is not?
Well, from the entrance to North Winchester to the exit of South Winchester.
Yeah.
And what did we do? Were we gonna do something?
We're trying to narrow it, because one of the reasons why people will speed there is because it's just a wide open straightaway. So they figured they'd go as fast as they want. So we wanted to narrow that. We also wanted to have, have left-hand turns at the streets that you need a left-hand turn in, instead of having that hole all the way down that stretch, just cut that middle lane, and they're actually have that lane used as a passway different times.
Okay, so now you're saying, we're not doing none of that?
No, there's a-
Oh, no, no, it's not us. It was on the state ten-year plan, the New Hampshire DOT ten-year plan, and it got taken off.
Oh, so now they're gonna leave it alone?
Yep.
So is that a good thing or a bad thing? Mike says it's a bad thing, right?
It's a pecking, cause we're not getting-
It's a very dangerous-
Well, we're not getting the project, yeah. Well, that, that was part of the, the approval for the-
Yeah, but the money would have been strictly spent to that.
The project was gonna, that was gonna come in, and we have crosswalks and all of that.
It's easy what they do.
Store and stuff like that, and the real cotton buildings up there, um, you know, it's, it's an unsafe area, right? And plus forty miles an hour down there, and the study we did, the, 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 uh, the speed is fifty, which is ridiculous, and then with all that growth that's been going on in there, and the more growth we're trying to get.
Right.
So it's, and you can understand the state sometimes, it's just-
Well, they had to cut a lot of projects due to funding.
Oh, I know.
And ours was just one of them.
Okay.
Finally. So that, Lori had that put in for informational purposes, so that we would know that that project was off the plan. I wonder if we can get it back on the next ten-year plan?
You and I may not be around by this.
Careful, careful.
I'll be, I'll be lucky if I am around, too.
You'll be around. All right, old business. So, with regard to old business, the, the rail trail improvements, uh, and where are we with that? The rail trail improvements under the tap grant? I'm just looking, all right, so we'll, we'll skip over old business. Administrative update, vehicle inventory update, and Weber Hill Guard Rail, and update on bridge, bridge committee and signs.
Uh, the inventory, vehicle inventory update, so, um, we have one new police cruiser, so we have to dispose of, um, the oldest one, which I believe is Chief's car, um-
But we did that, right? That's, it's time hung now, isn't it?
No, this just happened-
Just, just, just about the last few weeks.
Like last week. So, um, in talking to Joe, um, we need something from Solid Waste, our new solid waste person, and we also-
Joe Drewsill?
Yes, yeah, sorry. Um, for Public Works, so Solid Waste will share, we decided that, um, Solid Waste, it'll be our recommendation, if the board approves it, for, um, them to take the car that Chief has, I believe it's a Ford Explorer, with a hundred and six thousand or seven thousand miles on it. Um, so it has less miles than the one sitting out, there's three out back, but, um, I'll, I'll touch on that after, so we're gonna recommend that , um, Chief, uh, that that cruiser goes to Joe Drewsill for the Solid Waste and for occasionally the DPW, um, crew to take that. Um, and it also, I think that we have a lot of cars sitting out back.
So before that?
Okay.
Um, is that vehicle gonna go through service, so we determine?
Oh.
What, what level of repair, if any?
It needs four thousand dollars worth of repair. Forgot to mention that.
Is it, is it, is it worth putting the four thousand into that one, or utilizing one of the other ones, since you're gonna be talking about downsizing, so?
Joe and I did talk about that, um, and we decided, both agreed, that if any one of, well, he knows more about them than I do, but the sedan has like sixty-two thousand miles on it, um, and Chris has been using the other one when he needs it, um, and the other one, um, we decided that would be like the, if we have to get rid of one, which we don't even have to get rid of one, but if we do, it would be that, that one of the Ford, the other Ford Explorer that Chris isn't using for court enforcement and building.
So at this point, you're recommending that we, we designate the, the chief, the chief's car for DPWs?
The Ford Explorer.
Water and sewer, and it's gonna need four thousand dollars in repairs?
Where's that money coming from?
Before it can get an inspection.
Wait till January, we won't have to worry about inspections?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
No, but it needs to be staged. Um, I don't know if we talked about that. I don't even know if we decided. It's just, and we may not even put, it may just sit until we can put the money into it, but I think as far as inventory goes, um, that would be our plan to keep that one for Solid Waste.
At this point, at this point, we're, if this is informational, then?
Exactly, yeah. Um, and then also, I was talking with Bill last night, um, you know, I had mentioned, you know, we don't really need the three cars to kinda take me, we have a lot of the parking lots kinda full back there. Some days you can hardly find a parking spot, um, but Bill had a good suggestion to kinda take a, um, in, not an inventory, but just, um, keep a schedule and track of who is using cars, um, kinda log it, like a log of when they're being used and how far they're going and stuff like that, before, um, the original intent was to put one on municipal to get a little bit of money for it, um, but if I can, we can certainly do that to, to track it, if you want.
I think, yeah, no, I agree, cause I think if, it would be silly, we got rid of it, then we find out we actually need it. We should at least know whether we need it or not before we get rid of it.
Um, I'm thinking.
Okay. You're at that senior level now. You're allowed.
No, that's a lot to absorb there. It was a lot, you know, with cars and all that, right?
Yeah, we don't need to make any decisions. It's just, that's our plan.
Engines, new engines for trucks that have twenty thousand miles on them. Did you hear?
Monday, they're doing it.
Are they really?
Tripping it out.
Oh, God.
Can't believe it. All right, so that's informational right now, right? What do you, we're not gonna make any big decisions on vehicles. Park one down in your driveway at home, so we can hide it. Why don't we, can't we put one down in Public Works or something? We got a big parking lot down there, give you room.
Well, is it gonna get you lost?
We are getting, the-
If it's not gonna get used, we might as well get some money for it.
Right, but the log will help us.
Sell the one, and then we put the four thousand into the other one. We sell it for four thousand, pays to fix the other one.
That's what I'm saying.
We'll get there.
All right, we'll get there.
Okay.
What about getting the decals on the cars?
Yeah, I don't even have a shirt with a decal on.
I think we have them, I just haven't had the time to get them on the vehicle. I think that's the problem.
All right.
Well, let's hire somebody, some high school student to come in and do it, some graphic art student.
Bring it somewhere to have them. Maybe there's a local, um, company that would do it for us.
Look at these meetings coming up. Oh, my goodness.
Boy, oh, boy, oh, boy. Um, so Weber Hill Guard Rail, you wanted an update on that? The New Hampshire Dot permit was approved for the right-of-way, and Gordon Services is gonna install it as part of the contracted services there for the hill stabilization. I think they had-
And that's gonna be done this fall?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I had something else. What do they have?
You have, uh, with regard to that or something else?
No, something else.
You have the update on the, the bridge committee signs? That's here.
He, yeah, he did, um, no, cause we kinda talked about that earlier, yeah. Um, yes, he did give me an update on that. He has, I believe he has the quotes, and he's gonna schedule another meeting with the Bridge Committee to determine, um, that. Uh, but the solar array, we're almost on the grid. That's right. They, that's what it was. They completed the solar array, so we're just waiting for EverSource, um, to come in and do whatever, the paperwork essentially, and then we'll be on the grid.
Great.
That's it.
Did you, did-
Um, the wastewater.
Yeah, West Swansea wastewater treatment plant. Did you bring the letter that I had Katie draft?
Yes, I did, but I don't know where it is, so it was in that folder. I didn't even see it, but she said it was over here.
It's completed at the end of the year.
Not on the grid yet, but waiting for the EverSource to complete the paperwork. Um, what was it, Bill, in regards to? I don't-
It was with regard to parking over at the West Swansea, uh, the project next to Gamarlo's?
I know I signed that, but I don't know what order it was in.
Oh, you signed something? Oh, right here.
So did both Jim and Mark sign it? Cause I can't sign it.
Do you wanna read it?
Oh, they read it, so.
Oh, okay.
All right. Um, I, I won't be here the fifteenth, but if-
Yeah, so what do you guys wanna do? I don't know.
If there's desire to have a meeting, by all means have the meeting. Otherwise, it would be the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Let's go to the twenty-second, right? Unless something happens?
Yeah, so what happens? You guys just come in and sign the manifest?
Sure.
Yeah, they-
Just, yeah.
The same as it would be next week.
I'll come in and see you on, on what, Wednesday morning? Are you all right with that? All right, so on the fifteenth, we'll just show up at your office on the fifteenth?
All right, so we're gonna take that off the, take that off the schedule, the October fifteenth, cause then it's weekly from there on out.
That's right.
Yeah, that's great.
All right.
All the way to, it's weekly all the way to November.
We get some time off around November.
Yeah, we have Thanksgiving on.
All right, anything else? Michael, we're gonna go in then on public.
I'm just wondering if we could, uh, petition the state to warn the speed limit there at six, about thirty, thirty-five. I know we've tried that before, and it doesn't work for us.
We got them down to forty at one point, and I think that's the lowest they wanna go.
I can't hear you.
They got to forty at one point, and that was the lowest they wanted to go. It was forty miles an hour, cause it was like forty-five.
Lori, that's not helpful.
Do you know where it is, Bill?
I know where it is.
Don't fall down the stairs.
Not that's better. You guys should turn it off a lot, I wanna see what you experienced.
Right, and, and any else, Michael?
All right, well, I'm-
It's, it's kind of, I can't answer the question, the state probably won't do whatever they want to stop. And there's, there are ideas just to detract the specifics.
True.
We just don't have a police presence to really make it that, and I don't, you can only control so much every day.
That's true.
We would catch everybody going through stop signs and speeding.
Wish the money would stay with the town.
Well, I'm gonna reach out to some people in the legislature, why don't the white people can't shit everywhere?
Right, right.
Right.
You know, what actually might got us, why you create dirty cops. Well, a cop is dirty, you dirty. That's not gonna create, what cop is gonna lose his career almost three days?
Right.
I, I, no, the guys I know, the sergeant wouldn't.
Oh, we could be like Georgia was back in the day.
My father, the state captain, shooting my father came down. And the only thing to say that we get a ticket was it had, my son is a US three hundred thing. And it's state trooper. That wasn't great before, stopped him, so he got out that way. But told me better slow down. And he says, if only you were seventy-five and seventy, Rodney, you had New Hampshire plates on your car. So he thought he was, get one of those golfers and get a ticket.
Sure.
And he said, some places got apples anymore. When I was in, the police officer would collect his twenty-five dollars when he gave you a ticket.
Really?
That happened down there. But that's places we had, Brian, you fight, and we needed to, you know, like, farm.
You walk out there, and shut the lights up, and all of us are sitting here in the dock, and we're downstairs. Right here in the pitch dark.
Second?
Second.
Are we going in under reputation?
We're going in the non-public, Mike.
Under A first, and then C, A.
A, all right.